Come on.
Okay, we're gonna call the new board and it's 7:01 here.
Please join the president of the region.
I plead the citizens of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, to this world, for this reason.
Olivia Quintero here.
Vito Campanelli.
Here.
Winifred Rodriguez here. Shannon Johnson here. Marjorie Bussack.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Marjorie. Sharon Anderson here. George Torres.
Here.
Moving on, reading, uh, reading of communications, Char, all of the board of 41st, the public packet, or are there any other communications?
I do not.
Okay. Grace, do you have anything for us?
Yes, um, I'd like to, uh, we, we sent a notice out to employees and to the board about the unfortunate passing of one of our paraprofessional Valerie Pullos. I am hoping that Terry Silva is on. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence. After that, I would like to ask Terry Silva to just say a few words about Valerie. So if you guys can join me in a moment of silence briefly, and then I'll ask Terry to briefly talk about this, this pull up. Thank you. Uh, Terry Silva, are you on the line?
I am here, Mr. Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rivera, district administrators, and fellow Alliance 103 staff. I wanted to just recognize Valerie Pullos this evening. She was one of our staff members as a teacher assistant. She began her career in District 103 on August 28th, 1998. I'd like to read to you just a few words that I had written regarding her experience and her, her time here at Lincoln School. It is with heartfelt sorrow that I share with you the passing of our beloved teammate, Valerie Pullos. She transitioned and went home on the evening of Saturday, February 20th, 2021, after many years of battling illness. For those of us who have had the pleasure of getting to know Valerie, she was a very private person, but she had a giant heart for her husband and her son, George, and all of the children that she supported at Lincoln. Valerie was, was known for being dependable, direct, would tell you like she saw it or felt it, and kept the majority of her pain and suffering to herself for years. She was not one to often ask for help, but she expressed great appreciation when it was given to her. Every interaction she had with the kids was out of love for them. From a redirection to a student combing her hair and styling her hair every morning because of that strong bond. She would often tell me how much the students in the fourth and fifth grade CD program meant to her as she had been with them for years at Lincoln. In fact, so much so that she was considering moving to the middle school to be with them for a little while longer before they had to leave for high school. Her face would always light up and smile when engaging in a conversation about the kids. And when I spoke with her this past week, her voice ached when she shared how much she was worried about them. And now she can watch over them every day and smile. We're blessed to have known Valerie for such a short time, 20-plus years, um, but we're grateful for her trust in getting to know her just a little bit. I will miss you, Valerie. Thank you.
So much, Terry. Thank you, Terry.
Chris?
Yes.
If I, if I just might take a, a second, um, I had the pleasure of working with Valerie Pullos since she started. I worked with her both at, at Lincoln and, um, at George Washington. Valerie, though, I think one of the things I admired most about her is that when you asked her your opinion, she was brutally honest. She told you what she felt, not what she thought you wanted to hear. Um, and, and I respected her for that. She had, she did have a big heart, and she worked exceptionally well with kids with special needs, and she treated them like her own children. Um, I think the district was blessed to have her in our employment and to work along with her, and, um, she's certainly gonna, certainly gonna be missed. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I, I want to talk next about the, uh, vaccination plan that, uh, that we have for our school district. We have partnered with Morton High School District to coordinate for our staff to be vaccinated in the near future. We will likely, again, if with all plans go as, as they've been stated to me, uh, we will likely have the first round of vaccination completed for our staff during the week of March 8th. I'm hopeful that that will be done by, say, March 9th, 10th at the latest. Um, the second round will take place approximately, they, they said it has to be between 17 and 41 days after. I don't know the exact date that we will have our date, but it'll be within that range. Um, I presume we will have one day to do our staff and, and also one day for the second round. That is, since that's how the first round is being organized. It takes about seven to 10 days after the back, second vaccination to be in full, uh, uh, effect, to have the full effect of the vaccination. This could mean that if we look at a timeline that should be completed with our staff and have the opportunity for all to be fully vaccinated somewhere around, you know, the, the middle of April, and that in itself becomes a new variable that we can bring to the table when we're discussing with the different unions about a potential return to in-person learning. That's a new variable we can put in place. I know we've been looking at the metrics as well at the same time, and, and those have been steadily going down, but there's still a, a couple of zip codes that are, uh, not in the, the appropriate range. Um, and, and I did want to explain briefly that there, there's, when we're bargaining with the union, we're, we're bound to that, and it's something that we do with our union. And the metrics and the decisions we make are what we do. And we made, made those decisions back, uh, early in the school year, and, and there's just some, some thoughts that we use the same parameters or metrics across the, the state, and that's not true. That's done at an individual district level. And so the two areas we looked at were the positivity rate, and it needs to be below 5%. And the other metric is the new case rate, which has to be under 50 per 100,000. So even though another district neighboring could have used metrics, they may have used different metrics. And, and also, you know, uh, the numbers could be higher, or some are not using metrics at all, using the committee to say what happens and if they come to agreement. So there's varying different ways, and, and right now, you know, while the, the positivity rate is very close and has hit, uh, below the 5% for us, we are still monitoring the other metric. But, you know, the new variable that we can bring to the table is the, the timeline of vaccination to consider potential return with that variable included. So, and that's what we're continuing to bargain, uh, with the different unions regularly, and, and those are the, the factors that we'll be bringing to the table, uh, in the near future. Um, one other step that we're doing is, uh, vaccination steps and the safety plan that we have. So principals by the end of this week should have a good thorough analysis so that when we do come back to the table and we're looking at coming back to in-person in, in some format, that we'll have that homework, you know, which we have the things in place, but we want it to just be organized and make sure we're not anticipating any little detail. So I just wanted to update the board on that and then, and, you know, a little bit with the community, because there's, there's been some, uh, debates about the dynamics of, you know, metrics and, and how we're bound and why it's different from other districts. So I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on that as well.
Um, uh, Chris, could I, can I just ask a quick question in regards to teachers coming back and possibility? I know, I know you have your timeframe and you'll work that all out. I'm not concerned about that. But I, I, my question has to do with the equipment we'll need when ultimately we'll open the school. Now, I, I know that the board passed the, the resolution to purchase the temperature, um, equipment, and I saw on a prior bill list that we did purchase it. Has that equipment been installed, or do you have a plan for installation before, um, before, um, we would open school, however you guys agree on opening? Will that equipment be in place? Or is it in place now?
The, the equipment is up and functioning and the, we have, uh, a few CD programs already in place, and they are up and running in those areas, and we're getting them up and running in the other locations if they have not already been done. I know where the CD programs are in, they're definitely up. Um, I, I could double check to see in the other buildings to see if they're already mounted or, or, you know, configured, uh, at this point. So I, I will check on that and, and let you know, uh, tomorrow, board member.
That, that, yeah, when, whenever you can. And, and we have at, at least one, um, piece of equipment in each location?
That's correct. And, and two, and two of them at Lincoln and at GW, which still.
Okay, thanks.
Cover every doorway, but it, it at least helps out with the bigger schools.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I get the main, that we're like becoming predominantly in.
It, it, it's being configured by entrance, like right now at, at Lincoln, for example, you know, they're, they're doing it where the kids are coming in, and, and I'm not exactly sure of what door that is right now, but they've configured it to the location where they're, they're entering now. As things evolve, you know, we may have to adjust.
Well, my question is, so like at Robinson, they have to then one come into main door at Robinson, off of the parking lot there, like my teacher's desk.
Yes.
However, students don't come in that door. Students come in either off of, uh, the old front of the school or off of home or whatever, teenage or whatever. So would the, would the machine be where the staff is coming in, or would it be where the predominant amount of kids come?
Well, we're put, trying to put it where we get the most, um, traffic, and, and so it can handle that, that amount of people, and will have less exposure to individuals have to use the handheld, um, thermometer. So that's been done at a building, uh, level decision with the building leader, because they have different configurations of where individuals enter and, and whatnot. So that, those, those decisions have been made at the building level, um, and, and or are going to be made.
Well, mainly every one entering the school will be scanned one way or the other, whether it's manual and the thermometer or the device, so.
Correct.
Chris, do you think it's a staggering arrival? So at my school, we have, um, kids assigned to a color, if you will. So anybody in the purple group comes at 8:48, anybody in the orange group come at 8:51, um, just so it's, so not everybody's arriving at the same time. And it seems to work okay.
You, you know, and, and those are the, those safety concerns and things like that are exactly what, you know, we, we put in, I mean, if you looked at the, uh, access testing, uh, uh, safety plan, that's the level of detail that we're working on in, in these plans. So yet, yes, the, the, uh, those are things that we'll discuss as safety plans for returning, and then we, we're meeting with the union, uh, next week, and, and we will be discussing those very things, yes.
I have a question. Are all the schools closed campuses? They don't go out for, I'm sure, any, the teachers, no one, right?
Teachers can, yes. They, they, they can go out there, but students do not.
Are you gonna have to re-scan them as they come into the building every time, maybe they're gonna get scanned? At my job, we need, there's that machine where we have to put our face every time we go back in the building.
Yeah, I'll, I'll write that down for discussion.
Yeah, because you get people leaving the building to go for meetings with other schools or at the ad building or whatever. So you're right. I think anybody leaving the building should be scanned as they're coming back in.
Well, I think that would be easy to deal with that machine then, right? Like if you leave the building, then you'd have to come back in this door with the machine.
Not through that specific door, yes.
I think that would be totally ridiculous.
Because my building, we have like tons of people in the building, and there's only two of the face machines. We have to stand six feet apart. We box up, you don't have a fever, you're normal fever, and you go in, and then everybody goes through. So, hey, there's a way to work it out.
Sure. Thank you, woman, I would love your comment.
Okay, good evening. For anyone joining the meeting via telephone, you will automatically appear in our list of meeting attendees. During public comment, the meeting moderator will call out the last two digits of their phone number in order they appear in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when the last two digits of their number are called, you will be able to make a public comment. Please press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't say anything when your number is called, we will wait three seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone wishing to make a public comment will have three minutes to speak. After the three-minute mark, you will be alerted that your time is up, and you will then be returned to a muted state. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. For anyone using Google meets, please check the chat box with moderator's instructions for public comment. Please note that you may only make one public comment, whether it be written or written, just a friendly reminder. Um, I have two written comments. The first one, Tom Weiner. I, along with every parent in the district, would like to know if the district has a plan in place to get the students in class next school year. Two cases of COVID on the decline and the positivity percentage also. Plus, with vaccines proceeding slowly but moving in the right direction, everyone should be in class for next school year. I think everyone can agree that the children should be in class for in-person learning. They need to be around other children for the social interaction and to get better instructions from the teacher. So please let the parents know what the plan is to get our children back in class. Also, please, please let us know the sooner the better. So all the teachers in District 103, a big thank you for making learning in this crazy world we are in work. You are all heroes. Then we have one more, Joanne Schaper. Good evening. Once again, I am disappointed that the 103 board is keeping its meetings close to the public. It is impossible to hear the meeting via phone. With that being said, I have some questions. I do not see the Baker-Tully audit presentation on the agenda for tonight. The board always had the audit presentation in January, it's now the end of February. Will there be a presentation and a physical copy available for tax change? Number two, back a few years ago, one of our maintenance employees wrecked our snowplow and was fired for it. What about this year's damage and wrecking of our snowplow? Will someone be held accountable? Number three, the word is that 103 children will return to school 4/7/21. Is this a possibility? Number four, children have been told that the last day of school this year is May 21st, 21. Is this true? Number five, will board meetings ever be held in GW's cafe again? When? Number six, I did not see an update on COVID stats yet when I looked at a 103 website. And number seven, have the temperature machines, have the temperature machines been installed in every building since they were approved months ago? And that's it for my public comment. Um, moderators?
I will read off the phone numbers, starting with the three-digit area code, followed by the two digits at the end of your phone number. When I read yours off, I will give you a couple moments to unmute yourself, and then I will move on to the next. We are starting with 708, ending in 03. Next, we have 708, ending in 21. Up 03, unmuted.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Joanne. I have a quick question. I know I sent a letter. Are you going, are you going to post on the website the staff for return to school? The last time they were posted was February 5th.
Joanne, I can call you tomorrow because they're actually on the website under the metric update.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, 708, ending in 21, one more try, just in case. All right, 708, ending in 30.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Mr. Weiner.
Yes, yes, Tom Weiner.
I, I'm sorry, you turned up more policy, we could only make one public comment, and I know you might.
See, I didn't know that. If I would have known that, I would have put, put, sent in a completely different public comment. But I can't, I can't ask a couple of questions, that's a different topic. Hello?
Go ahead, Tom. Go present, send it by.
Yeah, uh, this is for, on the, the student resource officer, which I think is a good idea, we need one. I just have a couple of questions about that. Like, if this is gonna be Alliance Police Officer that's gonna be assigned to GW, and so he's already collecting his salaries as Alliance Police Department, why is the district gonna be paying the Village of Lions $65,000 to have him sitting in, in GW for 20 hours a week? I mean, that's a pretty good gig, you know, for a part-time job. I wish I could get a part-time job for $65,000. Also, when will this start? Will it start right after the vote tonight, or will the paper start when all the students are back in school? And one last one. Why are agreements with the Village of Lions, like this one is, it, it favors the Village of Lions and not the district, because $65,000 could go a long way in, in the district, and we're giving it to the Village of Lions? And with that, I want to say thank you, and I'll be listening.
Thank you.
And next in line, we have 708, ending in 53. And next, we have 708, ending in 66.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hello? I'm good.
Hi, please.
Hi. Uh, Earl Johnson, I just, I'm calling in regards to the action item for the school resource officer, and I have a few questions if I could. The first question, who will the officer be? The second question, will the officer only be assigned to the middle school, all lion schools, or all schools in the district? Number three, if this is for all schools, where other towns in the district ask if they wanted to partic, participate in this, if the answer is no, why weren't they? Number four, since there was little to no interest from the board previously on this position, what's the big push now, especially since there are no students in school? Number five, has the board realized that this officer will be paid $65,000 a year, or for the 10 months, excuse me? However, the district will also be on the hook for any overtime hours over the four hours per day. This could really add up, especially when District 103 is facing a deficit. And lastly, my question is, why are school boards, school board meetings still closed to the public, especially if you want to have teachers come back to school at some point? The board meetings should be open to the public. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
One final phone number, uh, area code 773, ending in 34. And there were no volunteers for public comment from meet users.
Moving on with, uh, year-to-date financials. Their financials are attached to the general agenda, I'll put it public. Consent agenda. I'm looking for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, do I, will I have a motion? Another second.
I'll second that. Over. Okay, Vito, that was your first, and Olivia second, and Olivia Quinto. Vito Campanelli.
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez.
Yes.
Shannon Johnson. Yes, Jane. Okay. Uh, Marjorie Bussack.
Yes.
Thank you. Sharon Anderson.
Yeah.
George Torres.
Yes.
Moving on with board reports. That our policies, uh, board is reading, that we'll go for a second reading after March 23rd, regular board meeting. If there are any questions on the policies, please reach out to Superintendent Rivera, please. Moving on with action item A, looking for motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Lions Elementary School District 103 and service employees, international union local. Number seven, to the approval of retirement stipend for, of $500 for Cynthia Sletta, who are retiring in lieu of male, which is provided for in the collective bargaining agreement, section 11.5, dot. Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Over.
Okay, that was, uh, Vito did the first, and Olivia seconded it. Uh, Vito Campanelli.
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez.
Yes.
Shannon Johnson.
Yes.
Marjorie Bussack.
Yes.
Sharon Anderson.
Yeah.
Olivia Quintero.
Yes.
George Torres.
Yes. Moving on, action item B, looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, Lions, the School District 103, Alliance Council, Teachers Union of the West Department Teachers Union, Local 571, regarding pay leave for COVID-19 vaccinations. Do I have a motion?
I will. Okay, um, that was Shannon.
One more second.
I'll start. And Vito, okay.
Comment? Over.
Winifred Rodriguez.
Yes.
Shannon Johnson.
Yes.
Marjorie Bussack.
Yes.
Sharon Anderson.
Yes.
Olivia Quintero.
Yes.
Vito Campanelli.
Yes.
George Torres.
Yes. Action item C, looking for motion to approve the memorandum, oh, I'm sorry. Action item D.
See.
Action item C, looking for motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, Alliance, the School District 103, Alliance Council, Teachers Union of the West Department Teachers Union, Local 571, regarding pay leave for COVID-19 qualified reasons. Do I have a motion?
I'll second that.
Over.
I, I have, I, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
On page, on page two, under the list of services provided, um, uh, that's, that's quite a list for a four-hour, uh, uh, employment, but, um, it says.
First, I'm just, this is for qualified reasons. We're on C? This is for the COVID.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, I don't, it, it's not very plain coming through. I thought we, we moved on. I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, so I think Winifred was first, and then Olivia seconded. Did I go on?
Over.
Okay. Uh, Shannon Johnson.
Yeah.
Mar Juvasak?
Yes.
Aaron Anderson?
Yeah.
Olivia Quintero?
Yeah.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yeah.
George Torres?
Yes. Moving on, um, action IMB, looking for a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Lyons Elementary School District 103 and the Village of Lions concerning the engagement of a school resource officer as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make my motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
So that was Winifred and Vito?
Hold on.
Olivia comments?
No, I have some questions. On, on page, actually, it's page four. I had the wrong page. Um, Roman numeral double X. Um, it says their, the, the, uh, officer will be conducting classroom activities involving a wide range of topics, including but not limited to security, crime prevention, drug and alcohol. And these are all gonna be approved by the superintendent. So, so my question is, when the officer is going to present these? Um, you know, uh, uh, something on, on, um, uh, drugs or gay or whatever. Is, is this gonna be a one-shot deal? Or is it going to be similar to what we've done with other resource officers? Where, for instance, if he comes into the state sixth grade and he's gonna do a unit or some meetings on, on drugs? Um, will it be a continuance? Will it be an actual, um, activity that will be ongoing? Or just a, a one-shot deal?
Uh, what, what I'll actually do, uh, ours is work with the building leadership team from George Washington and include that stakeholder input so that we can make the best decision for the needs of the building. And then we can coordinate at that point. And, you know, and that can depend on, you know, and if we put ourselves in the, uh, regular school mindset, and let's say there's, uh, issues with a certain type of infraction, whether it might be lawyering around after school or gang activity or, or some other thing. If there, and there's some way that we can provide the, uh, training for the needs that we actually have and that we're capturing with data, that is what we'll likely try to work toward. But we'll do that collectively. And, and that, that's part of the preparation of, of things that we can do during this COVID time period prior to, uh, uh, students showing up.
Okay, okay. Um, my, my, I have, just have two more things. The other one is, um, there's a section on, on, on payment and we would be responsible for, um, any overtime. And I also understand by reading this that you hear the resource officer will be working with, uh, the superintendent, and I'm sure the principal will be in there to, you know, establish when they want them. I, I noticed that, well, we may be using this officer for after-school activities. And we would have to pay for any overtime. Um, I guess, I guess the flip side to that is, and while I understand in the crazy world we live in, um, it's also says in here that there may be times where the police chief would have to pull the resource officer because there'd be, um, some kind of, um, I don't know, emergency or whatever concern where they need all hands on deck at the, at the village. So, um, my question is, if we're, if the district is paying overtime for over-hours, and if the, if, if it happens where that officer has to be pulled in for village business, will we get some kind of a credit? Um, towards, towards the payment for, you, you understand what I'm saying? If we have to pay for overtime and they pull our officer, are we gonna get a credit for hours that he's not able to be here? Because the village indeed needs his services.
Yeah, and, and, and which, which maybe it's not a pretty long document, but, uh, I know the intent is that if there's extra hours work for us, you know, for example, let's say we, uh, have worked four hours during the day and then we are really concerned about an issue and we ask that the officer work something extra on basketball game or something like that, um, that, that could take place and that would be our charge. They would not charge us for additional work at the village. And at the same time, I'm, the chief assured me that their regular, uh, uh, police presence will, will be maintained. And they have people around the buildings before school and after school. And that, that is not gonna stop. And as it was before. So this, this, the security, uh, school resource officer, I apologize, will be, uh, will be, you know, will be managing that. And, and I can, I can assure you that, you know, Sheila will, uh, our business manager, Sheila Johnson, will not let us get out of control with the, uh,
Well, you know, I, I appreciate that, but that's not my question. Um, I, I know that there's gonna be times that we're gonna have to use a resource officer above and beyond those four hours. I don't have a problem with that. If it's a function and we need that. My question is, if the village is pulling him, because I read in here that they would have the right, which I understand, if there would be a village emergency or a situation where they need additional officers and they pull the resource officer away from Washington so that he is not able to work his four hours or his 20 hours that week because he was called into service at the village, will we, will, will, will the district be compensated back for those, that time, just like we would be if we paid overtime?
I understand. I understand now. Um, and, and, and I think that's one of those things, you know, where we'll, we'll just work together and see if we want to, um, adjust the hours later in the week for, for an event. Or if, if we will discuss credit, um, I, I guess I don't have an exact answer to that right now, but I'm sure we'll collaborate to make sure that, you know, if, if, if we're not using the individual, that we can then schedule them, um, a, a longer time at, at a needed area or something. But, um, I, I'm hoping that that won't be too frequent. But we'll, we'll definitely collaborate with, with those types of decisions to make sure that, that we're not being charged for services not being provided.
Yeah. Well, I, 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 while I respect that, and I'm, it doesn't say that in this agreement. And, um, I just think that there could be a possibility that, you know, it's not in writing, so it's not gonna happen. And I just wanted to toss it out there. And I'm not, I'm not implying that we're gonna be taken advantage of. I just know how situations arise and the police are called on to do many things. And if we're going to pay overtime, which I don't have a problem with, if we're using them beyond that, I don't wanna, I don't want to not get some kind of credit back. So if you could look into that, that, that would be, I would like that. And then finally, um, I see where, you know, the district is gonna pay the $65,000. The village is gonna take care of the, um, um, the benefits part of it. But there's a, there's a line in here that says something to the effect that the district, um, is responsible if the, if the officer is injured, uh, during the line of duty at the school. And I just want to make sure that, uh, that our, in, our insurance, um, covers that. Um, I'm thinking it does, but I would like to, you know, some verification in case, um, the district has to pay. I'm, I'm hoping that never happens, but it could happen where somebody, you know, um, uh, got hurt. And I, I would like to see the district, to make sure that the district is covered for that under our insurance policy. So can, can that be checked on?
Yes, absolutely. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna, but I have a question about, uh, if salary, this resource officer, is it salary or hour? I believe salary. I, I could double check on it. I know our share is the $65,000, but, um, that's what I'm trying to get. I think that's what part of getting, if you're salary, then you're actually gonna get paid for your hours, even if it's overtime. Yeah, let me, let me, let me-
Trump's been a dummy lately. Working in a, and waiting for the-
It's way more than forty-eight. That's, that's what I'm trying to- I'll, I'll, I'll look into that. You know, the bullet's all in the way. I see where she's talking about credit.
I think that, that something along those lines needs to be added in this memorandum before we can vote on it. Because, yes, it, this really just seems to be covering the Village of Lions side. It's not covering the district so much in regards to the thing. Because, I don't know, like, like you said, teachers work wait forty hours, way more what their salary for. And again, there's no- My second point. Eighty-one, twenty-five an hour is what this person is going to be getting paid. They are starting at a higher salary than a teacher with a master's degree for 20 hours a week. Which is not physically responsible. And I'm not gonna argue about it. I just wanted to put that out in public, so.
I just, this problem, are, are we actually paying the, um, officer or are we paying the village?
I believe we're paying the village.
So, to your point, um, that officer may not be making $65,000 at all. I would hope that he is, but he may not be.
So is he an employee? Maybe, so that he's technically not an employee of the district? This is kind of like, um, like a leasing for- Like a rent-a- I don't wanna say it like that, because it's more than that. Because I really hope that this is gonna make a difference and help these kids and be there as a good resource. But yeah, that's so, that's a good point, too, then. Maybe some clarification in that area, because I interpreted it.
Because like, say that their salary, I, I don't know if we start at easy, but say, say this officer makes $8,000 a year. So, that's our sixty-five plus, right, it's overtime. That doesn't, I mean, we're either A, paying three-quarters of a salary or we're paying half the salary and stuff, and it goes to, I don't know, maybe expenses the village incurs with him being gone or whatever. I don't know. But I'm just saying, there is that possibility for paying the village and not the officer directly.
It is an intergovernmental agreement.
I'm sorry?
It is an intergovernmental agreement, so when I see that, I don't take it as a word. We have agreement with the police department.
So we have, we have an agreement with the village, not necessarily that, I believe, the department. The Village of Lions. Yeah.
And the Village of Lions, okay.
Right, this, uh, the, uh, officer doesn't just come in on a bike. Obviously, there's a vehicle that's insured and everything. Those are all the expenses. We don't know what the benefits are and part of the other.
That's, that's my argument, right. Since, since we're paying the village, it doesn't mean that he's necessarily getting
All that money for four hours.
Uh, but also, when, when would he be starting?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to the, the chief and start discussing that, i- if this is approved tonight.
Okay, but there's no kids in school right now and we may not possibly even have any until mid to late April, so.
We probably would not need him tomorrow, obviously, but we would, we really want this guy to start to get acclimated with the schools. And it's not like he's gonna be here all the time when there's no kids. And what is he gonna do? So when a teacher starts coming in, that is gonna get familiarized with the teachers. And that point, he will be familiarized with the buildings and the staff members.
Well, I understand that, but I also think that no matter when we come back to school, with the teachers not being in-house right now, for the most part, I mean, some coming, I know, some don't. I would think that our teachers are probably gonna be in-house prior to our kids coming down. So he would have plenty of time just to get acclimated with the building. I mean,
Listen.
I'm building pretty well and I never even went to school yet. So I don't think it would take long to get activated there. Unless he started all the building. But I'm assuming it's just GW?
Yes, just GW.
And I get it, GW, these kids, I mean, I get it. This is-
This is what we're dealing with.
I get it. Not that they didn't get the task, do things with the other schools, because my kids were at lock-ins at Robinson with the police department and, and whatnot. But you're right. I mean, here, like, the nicest, the most normal kid is fifth grade, all of a sudden comes here or about picking-
This is where it goes change with the kids, yeah.
I get, I know this is where it needs to be focused for the most part. Not that the other schools need to be neglected. I, I guess it's I don't think you need to, like, be starting mark when we may not even have kids at school this year. I mean, who knows? Every time you turn around, there's a new focus period popping up. Who knows?
I remember- The law is that there is not to be this week. You know, next week. Right, right. They, they, because the training and all that, you know, the, the, the individual has already been undergoing a lot of training for SRO and, and those requirements, so.
They have to have a special certificate.
Right.
I, I brought all that information back like two years ago for the conference. So I've been a proponent for, for two years, but.
Can I ask a question, too? It might be a little ahead of time planning. But say like, you know, there's like, when things finally get back to normal, we're having our basketball tournament and we want that up for there. Could we adjust the schedule during the week then, so we're not possibly paying overtime if that was determined?
Correct, yes. And again, you know, the chief assured me that the, the regular police presence will not be minimized.
Yeah, but I think big kids would get a real kick if they saw like their SRO after basketball game. I think that would be way worth it.
And I worked, you know, I was a principal at a middle school and, and the relationships that they do develop with police officers is, is very strong.
Do you know police officers' schools are very strong?
Yeah.
So, I mean-
I think it would be very positive.
Like, when I go to my kids' basketball games and wake at them, man, I feel like a rock player. Like, I'm famous, because they get a kick out of it. It means a lot to them and it shows them they care. So they can pass to that, such way of an old school.
Absolutely.
Oh, I, 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 you know, it's hard for me to tell. Are you done? I had one, one more thing to ask you, Chris, but I'm not sure if I'm interrupting or if you're done.
Well, you're good. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I, I just want to clarify something else in my mind. This agreement, when I read it, is an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Lions and District 103 for the engagement of a resource officer. Now, that's all it says and that's all it pertains to. So is it, am I, am I correct in understanding? We still do not have an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Lions, like we do with all the other village, villages, for whatever that covers. Are we going to do that? Was it incorporated in this? Because while I fully support a, 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 a resource officer, I don't have a problem with that. I have some questions about what we're doing now, but in my mind, this, this agreement, um, while we're getting an officer, is, is ben, is, seems to be more beneficial financially and, 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 and time-wise to the village and not so much for the, for the school district. And that's, that's, that's a lot of money. Um, I'm, you know, I'm sure you're gonna work all that out, but th- this doesn't, this doesn't answer some of the questions that were asked tonight. So I think it's really hard to vote, um, to approve this when there are still questions. We don't have kids in school, so I, I think, you know, some of these questions you could get back to us. But, um, we only have now, if, when this is passed, and I assume you have the four votes to get it, that it's only for the school officer. And we still don't have a regular, uh, we don't have a similar, not regular, but similar agreement with Lions like we do for all the other districts, with all the other communities and the district. That's just my point. And I'm done. I'm, I'm done.
Okay, um, Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
No.
Mar Juvasak?
No.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Looking for motion to adjourn this meeting at, um, seven forty-nine PM.
I'm gonna-
Motion?
Second, I'll second.
Okay, so that was Winifred and Vito. Mar Juvasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yeah.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Shannon Johnson?
George Torres?
Yes.